Hey, good to see you. Yes, I wish, Ms. Ford.
After this.
We have two of you. Oh, you are on this. I'm on this thing. Oh, no.
Do this. The Policy Monitoring Workshop for the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors, August 11th, 2021, is called to order. Board members that are requesting absences today are, first, welcome. My name's Jennifer Wolsey. I am not Nate Hogan, if you can just tell by looking at me. Nate is on vacation. He's one of the board members requesting an excused absence, as is Ms. Candace Buckner. At this time, I would like for Ms. June Kokmar to please call the roll.
Ms. Abarka?
Is the microphone present?
Ms. Buckner is absent. Ms. Cortez?
Here.
Ms. Ford?
Here.
Mr. Hogan is absent. Dr. Jones?
Present.
Ms. Wolsey?
Here. Thank you. So it would be in order to entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
It's been moved and seconded. June, please call the roll.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolsey?
Yes. Okay. Next up on the agenda is a new item. It's called Review Old Business and Action Items, and I'm going to do a little explaining here. This is something new that the Board of Directors has decided we'd like to try. At the end of our last meeting, what we do now with each meeting is the Board Secretary will actually capture any questions or action items that the Board has from the night's presentations. And then it's typical that we, as board members, will receive each Friday what we call a board packet. And so those usually have the answers to those questions and action items in them, but in a, we would like to have the, close the loop, if you will, with the public when you hear those questions. We want you to also have the answers to those questions. So, yes, I see some clapping. We want to make sure that that information gets put on the board agenda. So what we will be doing in the future is attaching those answers to this board agenda item. So it would be, the questions come up in the previous meeting. You'll see them in this meeting's board agenda item under Review Old Business Action Items. So that's kind of what we're doing there. We're going to kind of let it go for a couple of months and see how that works, and we may do some tweaking. But the questions that mainly came out of the last board meeting were, there was one that was simply Ms. Buckner wanted to get some of the folks' names that had spoken so she could follow up with them, which was taken care of. But they mainly were around the change in admissions requirement for Lincoln on the GPA. And so we, I'm going to try to give a highlight because I'm not going to read all of this that was given to us. It will eventually be in the board agenda item that you can go look for. And at the next meeting, we'll try to show you online how you can get there yourselves. But one of the questions actually came from me about wanting to know the impact of the use of testing on students, what was the reasoning behind it. And so they gave quite a bit of links to information about articles on research, on what was used for, as using the use of standardized testing for admissions on selective schools. So there's those that will be there. There is about 10 pieces of rationale that they actually included as well, which I will not go through here, but you'll see that as well. Ms. Buckner wanted to know about the specificity around the committee and the people that made that up. And she had some questions that actually related to the question that I had also asked. So in the document that you'll see, they list out the groups of people that were involved in the decision, and they gave some of the dates and times that they met. So that's just kind of ways that we can be more transparent with the public around, you know, when we ask questions, you probably also want to know the answers to those questions. So we're going to try to be better about having that be in a format where you can have access to it. Okay, long explanation. Next part of the meeting, we're moving on to the Policy Monitoring Report of our Zero Dot Zero Equity Policy. The Chair would like to recognize Dr. Bedell. He'll introduce the report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to all of our guests who are here today, individuals who may be online. It's good to be back here after having to take care of several kids and getting them enrolled into school. Down to just one in my house, and it feels weird, okay? So in any event, today, we have a couple of important items under the superintendent's, well, actually, our workshop presentation, first and foremost, will focus on our 0.0 equity policy. And for that presentation, we will ask Dr. Darryl Davis to come up. He's our Assistant Superintendent over Equity and Innovations, and he will take us through this presentation as to where we are with this work.
Thank you, and good evening, Superintendent Bedell, Vice Chair Wolsey, members of the board, and audience. Joining me this evening is Mr. Marquise Hall, who is the newly serving manager of Student Diversity and Inclusion Programs, and you'll hear from him a little later in the presentation. So we stand before you this evening. The monitoring report is on Board Policy 0.0, also known as the KCPS Equity Policy. And this policy was adopted in 2018, and since then has really served as a guide for the equity efforts in our organization over the last few years, and has served as a mandate to all of us to foster a barrier-free environment so that all students can access a high-quality education. Now, the portion of the policy that I'd like to draw your attention to this evening is really the highlighted portion at the bottom, where it says, "The KCPS Board holds itself and all KCPS staff accountable for building a culture of equity at all levels of our district." That is what we want to speak to this evening, is how are we building a culture of equity within KCPS? So when we talk about equity, the way we've been approaching it is really through supporting leaders and other employees, and shifting mindsets, behaviors, and systems so that we center equity as a core goal. So equity should not be viewed as something that is an add-on or an addition to the core work, which is actually embedded in and critical to the work that we do in our respective roles every day in the organization. And so again, equity is not an add-on, but it's everyone working together to dismantle any inequities within our system through shifting mindsets, behaviors, and systems which work toward advancing equity. So what does this look like? You can see by the pictures on the screen, we have engaged a number of stakeholders, district leaders, principals, teachers, students, in building a culture of equity. First and foremost, a couple of years ago, we established an Equity Steering Committee, which is comprised of employees from multiple departments so that we have diverse perspectives on the committee. We also have parents on the committee. We have diversity in, you know, gender, ethnicity that serve. That is the Zoom shot that you see there. That committee was responsible for setting our four equity priorities, and we continue to meet monthly to monitor the implementation of the strategies toward reducing those disparities for those. We also have our Focus Thursday/Friday trainings, which our principals and directors and cabinet have participated in. We also, last year, launched our Equity Data Discussions with Principals. We created an Equity Dashboard. Well, it started with spreadsheets, but it's now evolved into a dashboard where principals can receive their data, and we can disaggregate that data to see how subgroups are faring within that school environment. We can, we can filter for students who are experiencing housing insecurity, students who are multilingual, students who have disabilities. The main factor is through race. So we really have meetings with principals to really understand how and who is not benefiting from the way things are. So in a perfect world, you know, not just in KCPS, but in society, through all the social avenues, whether it's income, criminal justice, or the field of education, ideally, if we disaggregated data by race and we saw no disparities, that's, you know, essentially what we're hoping for and wanting, you know, in Kansas City Public Schools. So right now, we are disaggregating data, reading proficiency data, et cetera, and we're working with principals through that. And then also fostering a sense of belonging through our students, through mentoring programs and other initiatives, cultural events. Many of the students have presented in front of this body, and we are engaging them in those discussions. So what are people saying? The feedback has really been overwhelmingly positive. This morning, Dr. Bedell and I spoke to about 150, no, maybe 115 new employees, new teachers. The, this morning, the comments were just really positive. You know, a dozen or so came up afterwards. We just really think this is great. We want to continue to engage in this work and this conversation. You can see by some of the tweets that we've pieced there for you today. One employee, Ms. Monica Thomas, said, "It was great to have an opportunity to attend the weekly implicit bias session, and it's so great to work for a district that understands the importance of holding these critical conversations." So that is our previous context. That's some of the work that has been done thus far. But in SY22, we have a lot more work to do. Last school year, we assessed our school-based employees. We really wanted to know from their perspective, you know, how is equity moving, you know, with what you can see? Because sometimes we're saying we're doing all this at this level. We really wanted to know, what are teachers and building staff saying? And in reviewing some of the comments, this has really informed some of the work that we're expanding upon for this year. So this is just one of the questions, and you can see from the survey, staff were asked to respond to this prompt. Adults in my school, and then they state how much they agree or strongly agree with the comment. And the top one says, "Adults in my school understand students' experiences and backgrounds." Only 60% of our employees that responded, and we had over 1,000 that responded, thought that they agreed with that statement. And what it told us is that we have an opportunity to really inform the conversation and to support teachers in the classroom with getting to understand how to leverage student strengths. And so with that, we are expanding on that input from school-based employees. And so one of our goals and objectives for this year is to launch a culturally responsive teaching academy. The goal is to work with principals to identify two teachers in their buildings who would attend a culturally responsive session once per month. So, for example, in September, they could attend that session, and then the goal would be in October for them to turnkey that same training back to their coworkers in the school setting. And so it's really, it's going to be a train-the-trainer model. So as we continue our efforts with senior leaders, we also are going to work with the largest base of our employee, which is, you know, teachers. And so through this, teachers will really get a chance to see and learn what good teaching looks like, when good teaching is not the same for every single child. And so how are we being culturally responsive to meet the needs of the diverse students that sit in front of them? That is the goal of the academy. So one of the things we're planning to do is not, again, not to make this an add-on, but to already, to leverage the tools that teachers already have in front of them. So on the screen, you have a screenshot of the Missouri Educator Evaluation System, which we use here in KCPS as a tool for teacher evaluation. And so teachers are already familiar with this document. They know what the expectations are according to what is on the screen. And so, for example, in the document, it may say Classroom Management. But through a culturally responsive teaching lens, we would just go a little bit further, that community and relationship building are co-constructed and ongoing to avoid punitive behavior management. So we take what teachers already have access to and then just show, what does this look like through a culturally responsive teaching lens? It's, you know, it's not something, this is just an example, but we will go through this each and every month, and we'll break down the professional frames of practice for teachers, but go a little bit deeper to make sure that lessons, you know, include student strengths, cultural backgrounds, and interests, and infuse into the work. Whereas this one simply says Lesson Plan and Design. But what does that Lesson Plan and Design entail through a culturally responsive lens? Next, I will call up Mr. Marquise Hall.
All right. Good evening, Dr. Bedell, Vice Chair Wolsey, and members of the board. My name is Marquise Hall, and I currently serve as the Manager of Student Diversity and Inclusion Programs for KCPS. Tonight, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about student belonging outcomes, some action items, and even give you a little bit of our timeline of what we want to accomplish this school year. So, this slide talks about increasing our students' sense of belonging. So we want to make sure that we're expanding access to mentoring programs for students. More specifically, many of you may know of MOCA, which stands for Men of Color, Honor, and Ambition. We're actually going to try to move away from MOCA and be more inclusive, and rename MOCA to RISE, which stands for Reaching Individual Success in Education. And with RISE, what we plan to do is include young ladies, because we know that our young ladies need to be affirmed in our schools. In addition to that, we're also going to try to make sure that we have program specialists inside of each high school so that all of the participants in RISE can get all of the academic support that they need to go to college and prepare for all of those interest exams and things like that. All of this is contingent upon certain funding so that we could have that. The next thing talks about creating spaces for students to engage in critical conversations. When I talk about critical conversations, I'm talking about students who are at the margins of our education system. So we need to think about what are the best ways in which we can engage them, and how are we going to include them in all of our planning? So much of this work is going to be done through focus groups and surveys, and even student town halls and engaging in with the students. The next bullet I would like to talk about is researching and piloting affinity groups. Affinity groups are really, really big, and they're really important because they serve as a space where students can find a commonality. And we know that our students may share a similar identity, but they all have a different experience. So we got to make sure that we capitalize on that and engage with them to make sure that they know how to solve problems within their schools and our school system. The next slide talks about increasing student outcomes. As you can see, it goes back to 2019, and it compares high schoolers with a mentor to those who do not have a mentor, and to see if they are on track to graduate within four years. As you can see in the chart, students with a mentor, by the time they reach 12th grade, they're 91% more likely to graduate on time and within the four years. So when they're given constant and consistent monitoring and nurturing, they're more likely to graduate on time. Some of the action items for this fall. So we've got a lot to do. As you can see, we need, we still need to schedule some dates. So the workshops and student engagement activities haven't been given a date just quite yet. And we still need to work on our culturally responsive teaching academy dates because the teachers don't know when this is, when this is going to actually start. The next thing talks about a syllabus completion. Dr. Davis provided you all with the draft syllabus that should be available in your binder for that. And then we need to work on our recruitment plan. We know that because we just want to launch RISE, that we don't have any girls quite yet. So at all of the open houses and back-to-school nights and all that good stuff, we're going to make sure that we are there to recruit girls to join our program. All right, the timeline. This timeline is, it's working. It's a working document that we're still going through. And I'm going to highlight just a couple of things on here. So where it says, "RISE Monthly Workshops Begin in October", that is where our students are going to participate in social and emotional health, focus on college and career readiness, and financial literacy. So every single month will be a different theme or topic to get our students ready. And then, if you look at the top, in January, we talk about National Mentoring Month. That's really big for my department, since we are the mentoring department. And what I want to do is I want to make sure that our students participate in a Flipgrid contest or a challenge where they get to talk about, what does mentoring really mean to them? Flipgrid is really amazing because it allows our students a chance to amplify their voices, and it's accessible to all of our students. And then the last two things in March and May that are on the timeline, those things are to be determined because we want to make sure that we engage the students and see exactly what it is that they want to do for those months and how we're going to celebrate them. We know that March is traditionally Women's History Month, so how can we engage the students so that they will tell us how they want to celebrate that month? And May is typically AAPI month. And many of these actions are going to continue to be in progress, and we are still working on building a culture of equity in KCPS. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Davis.
So as we further look at measures of success, I want to revisit our four constructs. As, this is how we have defined equity within KCPS. It's through these four buckets: Access, Representation, Meaningful Participation, and High Outcomes. And so really, these are the components for really approaching our work through an equity lens. And so when we say through an equity lens, it's really, before we make, say, any major hire, say, a senior-level leader, we should pause and consider the potential disparate impact of that hire on marginalized or underrepresented populations before we make a decision impacting a school. Before we make a major funding decision, we should pause and consider the potential disparate impact of that decision on our stakeholders that we serve. So when we look at these measures that we've discussed before, but this time, look at it through, say, a culturally responsive teaching lens, this is what this could look like at the end of our academy. Access could show up in that it provides cultural and linguistic access to the curriculum. When we look at representation, center students' lived experiences in the curriculum and in the co-construction of knowledge. Meaningful participation through a culturally responsive teaching lens could include students are seen as rich assets in that learning environment. Dr. Bedell often talks about getting away from deficit language and ending looking at students through a deficit lens. And then when we talk about high outcomes for all, through this culturally responsive teaching lens, we're realizing achievement gains, but also the social, cultural, and personal identity development gains that Mr. Hall spoke to earlier. So this work is not free of barriers. There are some barriers that we must overcome. This is just a few, but we wanted to highlight some. So one barrier I think we're all aware of on TV is overcoming the political climate. And so we hear on the news often, sometimes in state houses, where people are really questioning the validity of equity work. You know, are these, are these conversations doing harm? Are they really relevant? And so when employees come into, you know, our buildings and into our organization after hearing this, this is a barrier, and so we have to make sure we clarify and make clear through our own messaging why this is beneficial and how it works together to make our organization more inclusive for the students that we serve. Also, a barrier is really the fact that we have limited amounts of PD time. So, yes, it's easier to have principals and directors in trainings because they don't require a substitute teacher to monitor students. But teachers, many of them want to engage in this work, and we really simply don't have a lot of PD days available. And then if we wanted to offer this after work, we also don't have the budget to probably support the stipend. So the limited amount of PD is another barrier. There are others. But we wanted to let you know that we are working through some of those challenges to do the best we can with what we have. So we thank you for this opportunity, and we'll open it up at this time for any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. I'm also going to commend you because I think if we were keeping track, you did it under 20 minutes.
I did keep track. 16:53.
All right.
So we kid because we love you. You know that. But we do have a fancy new timer, I've heard. It just is not installed yet. Okay, so thank you very much for the presentation. I will open it up to my board colleagues. Mr. Abarka? Oh, and could you hold for one second? June, I'm assuming you can hear me still and that you'll take action item notes. And Ms. Ford, you're just going to have to speak out if you would like, because I can't see you, if you would like to ask a question. But I'll recognize, there we go. I'll recognize Mr. Abarka.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you both for the amazing presentation. I couldn't agree with you more in terms of some of the barriers that this work is facing at this moment. So I want to ask a couple of questions about MOCA. I know in the original design, it was to focus on a certain population of students who were academically on the cusp of success. Is the new concept also focusing on that, or is it more geared towards just an open mentorship opportunity?
It is still the same design. We are adding quite a few more college readiness aspects to it. Most of our work before may have been, you know, in making sure they were graduating on time. But we also now are pushing beyond that because we've shown a lot of success in that area. So it's now about also entering into and pushing through and persevering through college. And to your point, we are still going after students who are, who are in the middle or right beneath the cusp so that this program is best serving those that could benefit.
Yeah, and let me just kind of come to that because I can see where a follow-up question could come. So I'm going to try to answer that before it comes. Remember, everybody, we have a portfolio model of mentoring, and it's one of a kind. So we have success mentors. We have business mentors, you know. We have, we have a portfolio. So for our kids that may not fall within the qualifications of this particular model, they, most of them have success mentors. Those are the ones that really need that one-on-one adult advocacy, whereas these kids function more in a group-oriented model. So I just want people to know that it is a portfolio model that we have here with our mentoring that extends far beyond just this one aspect of it.
Yes, thank you for that clarification, Dr. Bedell.
And I just want to just denote how incredible this program is. I participated in it before I was a board member, and it, it has been one of the most impactful things. As you well know, I think the program has been limited by capacity. So I guess that's my, my question here is, how can the board support the expansion there to provide you the necessary resources to find the mentors that I know are KCPS staff to support the capacity as you expand this now, including female mentees?
Yeah, so right now, we're in the process of identifying additional mentors that could, that could join us now that it's multi-gender. But to your question about how can the board support, it really is through, supporting through funding. We are, we actually have a model designed. So through our limited capacity, we've been usually working with about 10 to 15 students per school, and we have six high schools. And so through the model that we're working through, we're hoping to have full-time specialists, at least in our neighborhood schools. And now those specialists can have, you know, 60 or more students on the caseload, which through that, we're making sure that no one falls through the crack. We have full-time support around the clock, checking in on students daily, making sure if there's a FASF a night, you know, am I going to see you there? What support do you? What support do you need? Any, any assets that we have, A-plus scholarships, college visits, the supports. And we could see through this endeavor that if we take 60 students per school and surround them with the supports that he or she needs to be successful, and then we see that 95% to 100% of those students are going on to college and persisting, then we know what is required. And then how do we come back and say, how do we expand this even further? So we have some data from our MOCA program, so we want to expand it to be more inclusive and to include more students. Funding is, we didn't put funding there as a barrier, but it is a barrier. I know Dr. Bedell is working on some money, so.
Dr. Jones?
Thank you all again for your presentation. I really, it was very informative, and I could say it's, being one of the success mentors the past couple of years, it's been very helpful seeing how that has the potential to impact use. I'm excited about the idea that we could expand that and have more support for more students. What, so like, one question and kind of a couple suggestions, you know, one of the things I thought about when you showed kind of that framework, I don't remember what slide that was, it was like the black background with the framework, was thinking about, some of those things that you listed on there can be framed outside of just like racial or socioeconomic equity. Some of those are just good business that would benefit all kids. So when I thought about, on the top, in that top-right quadrant, it says something about like relationships and things like that. And, you know, I think about something like teachers being comfortable enough to call kids parents even about, about good things, positive feedback. Like if that was implemented broadly or focused, I know some people do it already, but that would benefit all kids. And I know you know usually when stuff is about equity, it usually benefits everybody. So I'm really happy about that. And then the part about limited professional development time, professional development time to focus on some of these things as a barrier, I'm interested, what can the board do to support that? Is that something at the negotiate, what do you call it, CBA level and negotiations? Is there nothing that could be done about that piece? Because I've heard this before.
Yes, so there's many priorities and initiatives in our organization that kind of converge on us all at the same time. We, we need time for training on infinite campus. We need time for teachers to learn, you know, any new curriculum. You know, our, our equity work is important, and, and people are saying, when do we have time for this? So to your question about what can the board do, it's really just to see how can we engage, you know, all parties to understand the mutual benefits, you know, to teachers, to administrations, the administrators as well as the organization as a whole. If we engage more people and more opportunities to learn and engage in this work, the benefits for our families and our students are really, you know, will, will be highly measurable. So not certain who we need to have at the table, definitely our leaders in our teachers' union. I believe there's already a, a task force within the district, so having our CBA team to the table as well as other stakeholders, and I'm sure we can get to that if, if all of the ideas are at the center of that discussion, will do us in the best interest of students.
Thank you for that. And then I was just, my last suggestion is, as I noticed on that timeline, it mentioned, I think, like resume planning in the, toward June or in June, and I would just suggest that.
Yeah, yeah.
Any, any more wiping? I, I understand. So, so just, what was I saying? Okay, June, timeline. So resume planning, I saw that, and just working with some young people as we went into this summer, employers, the Hara KC, all of us, we were, we were having to be looking for students in May. And so if people could have a resume April, early May at the latest, that would be more beneficial for them to get opportunities. Because I did ask a couple of young people for a resume, and they said I don't have one. So I just would move, I would suggest moving that one up if you can.
For sure. Thank you for the suggestion, Dr. Jones.
Uh huh. Thanks. My colleague, Ms. Cortez. And your microphone, don't you like being down there with the better microphone?
I, I feel like I've, you know, kind of emerged from a sound cloud.
This is broken.
See, my validation. So, Dr. Davis and, and Marquise, I appreciate the time, and I, I have some questions. I'm going to kind of work backwards through the presentation. So they're kind of, I'll let you guys decide who gets to take what. I, I first want to comment about the first barrier that you note, right? The current political climate. And it strikes me that the best way for us to live out our equity policy, both from the board level and from the administration level, is to use these opportunities to demonstrate the impact on both our students' social-emotional growth as well as their academic achievement. And so I'm, I'm assuming, but I should never assume, that we are collecting data as we are implementing the new RISE program and growing our mentoring programs, that we will be able to demonstrate to our community that a commitment to equity is a commitment to achievement. And I think take some of the political wind out of that sail. So I appreciate the framework that you've created for us to make that crystal clear to our community. For my clarity, the RISE program and the mentoring, is that only high school-focused, or do we have programs that will step into our middle schools and elementary schools?
That's a really great question. I'm glad that you asked that. So RISE is specifically for high school students. And then we do have another program that we're working on, and it is called the Men and Women of Color Initiative. And that program starts in some of the high schools, and it trickles all the way down to some of the elementary schools. So we do have a program for them as well that we're working on.
Is that something you anticipate in school year '22, or is that a '23?
Oh, that's going to happen this school year.
Okay. Awesome.
We, all right, sorry about that. Because of our limited capacity, we are leveraging community partners in our Males and Women, Males and Women of Color Initiative. For example, we've partnered with the Urban Rangers, who've adopted Northeast Middle, Central Middle, and King Elementary. We have the Distinguished Men of Kappa Alpha Psi fraternity, who are adopting Melcher Elementary. We have the Sigmas, who are adopting Central Middle as well as Bannaker Elementary. And we also have the Boulay, who's adopting Lincoln Middle. We have meetings set up. We also have a partnership with Awesome Ambitions, and so they're, they're expanding their services and impact and reach into our schools. So we can't do it alone, and so we will continue to focus on RISE, but we know we have many more schools. And so to your point, we are engaging community organizations right now to see, you know, can you adopt a school? And until we have coverage in all schools, we'll keep on bringing in additional organizations.
It would, I would request that when it's appropriate, meaning not tonight and not on the short list of things for deliverables, but as your programs evolve, if we could get a map of whatever the right terminology is to kind of help us visualize which programs are at which of our schools and which schools still need partners, that is, that would be really helpful for us, I think, as board members to be able to understand as well.
We can absolutely do that, and we'll, I assume, June will put that on our action items. We'll get that to you.
So it would be helpful if I could read my own handwriting. Is, is RISE a program that's unique to KCPS, or is it a, is it a mentoring program that we're, that we have a resource for beyond the district?
So MOCA was supported through a couple of financial partners. We had the University of Missouri that provided support. They paid for our Dale Carnegie training. And then we also received a grant from the Prime Health Foundation, $20,000 to support MOCA, because those programs really are, had been geared toward, specifically toward improving outcomes for young men and boys of color. As we are expanding to RISE, I'm sure we could find additional organizations whose mission is to support improving outcomes or reducing disparities for young women. So I think we hopefully won't lose the other support, but also gain support. And so we'll, we'll provide an update as to who those partners are. You know, I'm not shy about asking for resources, and so I'm sure we'll find some people that will support us in that endeavor, and we'll share that with you.
Okay, but RISE is a KCPS program.
RISE is a KCPS program. We developed, you know, a unique name, and, you know, we just wanted to, it's MOCA-like, but we wanted to open it up so that we remove the, the barrier to where, you know, a student can say, well, I don't belong in that program based off of the first letter or word in that acronym. So we're, we're making it gender-neutral. We just want to support students in being successful in school.
Thank you. I, I'm very grateful for that, because I think there are a lot of young women that we serve who could benefit. My last question, yes, there is a last question, is around your first slot, well, the slide about the surveys that you did in the, with teachers at the end of last year. Is that, is that a strategy, is that a survey that you plan to replicate so that we get a sense of, are these trainings, are these strategies kind of changing the mindset of our team?
Yes, absolutely. So when we administered the survey last year, we really didn't have any expectations on what we might see, but we, we wanted it to inform our goals for the next year, which is the near, the year we're in currently. And so we plan to administer that same survey back out to the stakeholders, and hopefully through our continued equity efforts along with the Culturally Responsive Teaching Academy, that that 60% of students, I mean, I'm sorry, teachers who felt that adults in their school understood their students' backgrounds and experiences, that that would go up, and that would give us some quantifiable evidence that perspectives are changing and that, and that, you know, people feel like they're being empowered through these equity efforts.
Excellent, thank you.
We have another, I wanted to make sure I see you. Ms. Ford, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Davis and Mr. Hall, for all that you just shared with us. I have a couple of questions. As we think about going into this next year, I know you all presented a lot of information that you're going to be working on. I wanted to make sure that I had just some clarification on, like, what were your top three to four priorities that you're going to be focused, focused on as it relates to equity this school year? I think I saw one thing listed on the slide, but I wanted to just make sure I was clear on that. That's my first question.
Yes, thank you for the question. So this evening, we primarily tried to speak broadly to how we're building a culture of equity. We didn't get necessarily into many of the specifics outside of the Culturally Responsive Teaching Academy and the expansion of our mentoring programs as well as our diversity-inclusion initiatives. We're aware that in the past few years, we've had our Sankofa oratory competition as well as our Cisay Puente art competition. But for this year, as we want to engage students around Pride Month, et cetera, Mr. Hall was saying that we're not going to name, this is the way in which you can engage in this work. He's going to go out and meet with students through focus groups and engage with them so that we develop that activity for that cultural diversity celebration with the input of, with having representation from the students. But in addition, so the HR team has me booked for November and February for Focus Thursday, Friday for this year. And in November, we're focusing on creating inclusive classroom spaces for LGBTQ youth. So that would be a focus. And so in, in fact, between the adult PD focus, as well as what Mr. Hall is doing with engaging students around that, that is also a focus for this school year. You know, and, and there are other, you know, content pieces that we're doing, so we're, we're not taking away the other pieces that was on the early slide, but we are adding on to, to that and, and touching on additional topics that we have not in the past couple of years.
And I love the idea of the student affinity groups. I think that's really great. Are you thinking that those will be primarily racial affinity groups, or will there be other aspects of identity included as well?
No, the affinity groups will not only be racial, they will be based on things like LGBTQ, they'll be done on things like, students who have a parent that is incarcerated. I mean, there's many barriers that our students face. So I want to like be really open about what affinity groups we have. So essentially, when I start talking with students, I'll figure out, like, what affinity groups we really need to have, because they'll let us know for sure. So I have a few ideas, but it's better when it comes from the children.
Go ahead, do you have any more? It looks like you may have a few more.
My final question, okay, final question, and this, I don't know if this is a Dr. Bedell question or not, but about the building the sense of belonging, and I know focusing on that for the teacher, for students is important, but I guess I wanted to think about, in what ways are we fostering that same sense of belonging in staff as well? Because I think that both are, are critical in, in building that culture of equity that we've been speaking about.
Yeah, so I think that's important. I don't know, it's almost like you just threw me an alley-oop, like I can still get up, and I can't get up that high anymore. But here's the deal. As we spoke to the new employees today, we talked a lot about inclusivity, and we really focused that around what we wanted to see happen for kids, but most importantly, what we also wanted to see happen for them as employees of our organization. So today, it offered me an opportunity to kind of address just some of the stuff that's been going on around some of the socio-injustices and, and how our school district, when we really think about being inclusive of all, that includes our students, but also our faculty and staff, I shared with these new employees that our district has spoken up, that we are a very inclusive school district, and we want adults to know that they are, that their needs are being met in addition to the work we're doing with kids. I brought up the whole critical race theory piece, we've talked about that. We've had a lot of individual conversations. The district has been very explicit on our position that when we talk about culturally responsive teaching, think about it CRT, and then people say culturally, and then they say critical race theory. Both of them are CRTs, but the one that we really care about is giving our kids and the adults in our organization an understanding that we embrace all, and that as we address how we want to educate our kids, that we're very inclusive of those backgrounds that come that are unique, that meet the needs of this respective school district. So I took that opportunity today to talk a lot about that, but to also make sure, in particular for our white teachers, that they understand this work that we're doing around cultural responsive teaching, implicit biases, it is not designed to shame white people. I said I'd be a fool as a superintendent when nearly 65% of my workforce is white to, to then be endorsing that we're trying to shame white people, because we won't have enough employees to educate our kids. And so we talk a lot about us as an organization being respects, being respectful of the unique characteristics that we all bring in. And I think a lot of that went over very well earlier today with our, with our staff. But we'll be very intentional about that, and a lot of that work will be through Dr. Davis's office.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. In addition to what Dr. Bedell shared, Dr. Collier did over, maybe about a year ago, did ask that we launch some affinity groups for staff. And so at the time of that request, she did not have in place the retention coach that we have now. So we do need to revisit. I know that still is a goal, we just need to maybe just see how we'll collaborate on that. But when we look at how many districts and organizations currently work affinity groups, because of the limited resource of facilitators, many districts will just simply have, say, an affinity group for white individuals or individuals who identify as white, and then for people of color. But we know that people of color is a, is a bright group, and oftentimes, that doesn't speak to the individual needs within that group. And so we would want to be intentional about really making sure that we're not only looking at racial affinity groups, also gender affinity groups, also for staff who may identify, you know, as LGBTQ, or, or even, say, gender non-binary, et cetera, so that we have, we're, we're open-ended, and we want to engage our staff around what is our capacity to engage our staff around affinity spaces. And then we also want to be just really intentional around the goals of those groups. Some affinity groups are simply to provide suggestions to senior leadership, but we really want ours to be safe spaces. simply to provide suggestions to senior leadership, but we really want ours to be safe spaces where people can really talk about their experiences. And we know that it's not just about kids who experience the world differently. We have employees within our school system who experienced the world differently before they even arrived at Kansas City Public Schools. And I know as a teacher in several buildings in this district, I was the only African-American male in that building. So, so to have an opportunity to share my experience with others in other buildings, that affinity group is really the only opportunity to do so. So, so we're brainstorming. It is on the horizon. It's not on the timeline, but hopefully it's beyond the next update.
And I know our HR department's starting two affinity groups, males of color and women aspiring to lead. So, we are well underway to doing, doing this work here.
It's broke for real. So, thank you for all of this again. Incredible. It sparked another question in my mind as we look at not just the affinity groups, but these groups that are making important decisions that impact the equity within our community by the decisions that the board makes. So, my question is around, how involved are you in either educating folks outside of these affinity groups in situations like Blueprint 2030, right? When we hear these conversations talking about what is needed, what is missing, and as we get to a point where we're going to start talking about what may be and what may not be, where, how, as we look at redistricting, maybe our boundaries as a census comes out, you have a tremendous role in impacting everything, basically. How and where are you going to weigh in around those topics? The geography, the census redistricting, Blueprint 2030?
Well, you know, in any meeting I'm in, I'm weighing in. They probably say I talk too much, but equity is definitely a lens in which I see the world. But I know that many of our leaders and others who serve on the committees, you know, who have been selected to serve on committees either from our schools, et cetera, that they're bringing those diverse perspectives and that equity lens into that room. It is our, it is my hope, and I think it is the goal of the organization, that everyone is looking at equity through every aspect, every decision, through those four frames. Can everyone access the benefits for this program? Do we have diverse representation in decision-making? Is this going to lead to high outcomes for all? And if, and if we're not able to answer in the affirmative, then our, our role should be to do no harm and to not inflict damage upon groups who have already been marginalized through the way societal structures are. So, that is, that is, that is why it has to be everyone, you know, thinking this way through every decision.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. I couldn't be prouder to be a part of the board that is working on this sort of work in this district, and I hope that the employees feel the same way. But, and the other thing I just want to recognize is also for the public, Dr. Davis, when you did your presentation, we're trying to get presentations to the board in a format where we talk about what we have been doing, what we're trying to move towards, the data or the KPIs, key performance indicators we're using, and what some of those opportunities and barriers are. And we saw those in your thing and we appreciate that. So, we're trying to share with the public what's going on here. So, thank you and thank you, Mr. Hall as well. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Another wipe down. Okay. We are ready now to move to the superintendent's report. And so, I would like to recognize Dr. Bedell for an opening of schools update.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, and we'll get right into this presentation. There's a couple of important items here to discuss. And as we think about what we experienced last year, I don't think that there's a single person in this room that want to go through what we went through last year. Not having our students in our schools until March 15th was a very, very difficult experience, I think, for all of us. And I know with many of our families, their hopes is that we do everything that we can to keep schools open and to keep our students in school. With that being said, there's a couple of things that have been high-profile that's been going on around the country and in particular here in our region, where many families have showed up to board meetings opposing mask mandates and things of that nature. We've been very fortunate with this community, that this community has operated with a high level of grace towards this school district. We are a school district that never lifted our mask mandate. That is the reason why we did not have to come back and revisit it with our board to take action, as you are seeing in many other school districts. We will continue to require masks and we will, we will require masks of all staff, students, and visitors when we open up school on the 23rd. Moreover, you know, we all have a greater responsibility as public servants and that's what we are as educators. Our salaries are paid through taxpayers' money, which a large share of our funding comes through property taxes here within the boundaries that we serve. So, with that responsibility also comes a reasonable expectation that we do everything in our power as adults to be prepared, to provide the social, emotional, and academic needs of our students and to be ready to meet that despite challenges that may come our way. We have that responsibility. And for that, it is critical that we, as a school district, take a strong position that all of our staff must be vaccinated or either submit to weekly testing. No different than what the county is doing, no different than what our federal government is doing. And those employees are also funded. Their salaries are paid the same way that educator salaries are paid through elected, through property taxes and city taxes and state taxes. We also want our folks to know that, you know, vaccinated staff may also test as well as students, even if they've already received the vaccination that is available. We receive CARE Act, I got to take this off. I'm sorry. It's hard to talk in this that long. We've also received CARES Act funding, which ultimately allows for us to be able to fund what we're trying to do as a school district because the expectation, not only at the federal level, but at the state level, is that schools are in. There is no alternative measure of instruction plan and it's called AMIX. That is not available this year. So, the State Department of Education fully expects that schools are going to be in session full-time with students in school full-time. So, KCPs has worked diligently to ensure that that happens. All of our school sites will have free weekly testing. Our website information has, our website has information for COVID mitigation and that you can see here on the link, kcpublicschools.org/reopening-kcp. We have family guidelines and quarantine procedures and we will continuously update that as we receive information from the CDC and/or from our local health departments and also, of course, the state level. We have dashboards with current quarantine numbers by district and school location. Let's move to the next slide. And what we want everybody to understand is we're going to be extremely transparent about where we are. I said this multiple months ago, we all have to learn to live with this pandemic. It's not going anywhere anytime soon. And as you think about the variants that continuously morph into something new, the one thing we do know is that if you are wearing a mask, it significantly reduces transmission. I asked our team earlier today, I said, "How many of you have been on a plane recently?" And if there are people in here that have flown, you will know that these planes are packed. When you walk into that airport, everyone must have on a mask and they will not tolerate anybody walking around with it lower below their nose. When you hop on a plane, you are generally sitting in a row with three people. Everybody, whether it's a two-hour flight or three-hour flight, is in their mask. You have not heard of any major spread of the virus with all of these planes flying. And I've been on a plane now 15 times since we were able to open things back up. And I have not experienced anything negative because everybody's wearing their mask. Masks work. So, what we will continue to do in collaboration with the Kansas City Health Department is to continue to provide vaccinations. We've done that at our new teacher boot camp. We will have school site vaccine clinics for students and staff planned in September. The CDC recommend, have recommendations for high transmission, which is our status right now in Kansas City. Missouri always being highlighted as one of three states where the numbers are out of control. So, we will continue to recommend weekly screening, testing for students, the same for staff not fully vaccinated. We will continue to operate with our mitigation strategies such as masking, physical distancing to the extent possible. And I think it's important that I say this to everybody. Everybody wants to say, "Well, how can you assure three feet?" I can't. I'm going to do everything in my power to do the best that we can. There's not a single, single school district in this region that's going to be able to say, "We can assure three feet across the board." In most cases, many of us are able to do that at a high degree and that, that is the intent that we will continue to operate, knowing that there's a variance from school to school and from classes to classes. If students are masked, are masked and exposed, those students will not need to quarantine as long as they remain asymptomatic. That's from the CDC. Students and staff who are fully vaccinated do not need to quarantine if exposed to positive case as long as they remain asymptomatic. We have an excellent system in place. Laura and I know Sarah's on vacation at this point. I feel that we have a well-oiled machine around transparency in this area and what we've done when we do have to place people into quarantine. If you look at the next slide here, opening of schools report, we, this is what our dashboard will look like. It will be updated weekly. It gives you the positive cases. It gives you those who are quarantined. It breaks it down by elementary, pre-K centers, and K-8 buildings, middle and high school buildings, and then it gives us in the aggregate, all. And then, it breaks it down by school. So, people who want to go in and look at their respective schools can go in and they can see what these current numbers are looking like, school by school. In conjunction with our reunions, and I said reunions, we have created COVID leave procedures for staff. This is how it will work. Vaccinated staff, in the event that isolation is necessary, staff who are vaccinated and have submitted proof will not be required to use personal leave time. That time will be covered by the school district. Unvaccinated staff, in the event that quarantine or isolation is necessary, staff who are not vaccinated or who have not submitted proof will be required to use personal time. Yes, we will take into account medical accommodations, religious, but all of those things have to be discussed with that building administrator or that particular supervisor within a central office division. So, now I think we are moving over to our communication and how we're going to communicate. And I believe, is that me or is that you at this point? All right, passing this over to Ms. Waichu, our Chief Marketing and Communications Officer.
Good evening. One of the things we wanted to highlight as part of this opening of schools report is to remind everyone about our communication platforms. So, these bullet points here really detail all of the ways in which we want to communicate with our families and our public. One thing to note here, it talks about in the first bullet point, we do have a program platform called School Messenger. This is the way in which we do communicate with families directly. And all of the data that we pull for our direct communication with the families comes from our Infinite Campus system, our new student information system. And so, it's imperative that our families provide the correct contact information, emails, phone numbers, addresses, as we try to send information and communication to our families. If you do have challenges or you need help with this, we do have our communications@kcpublicschools.org email address. We answer those every minute and respond to those to support our parents if they need help with that process. Talking points, social media, weekly newsletter, website, and school-specific communications are also ways in which we communicate with our public. We wanted to provide a couple Facebook comments here in regards to our back-to-school information posts that we've been sharing on our Facebook platform specifically. You'll see some really positive comments from our families about thanking us for bringing the health of our students and families and staff first. Also, Ms. Everett talks about vaccine clinics available to our parents, too. That's the suggestion that we like. And also noting that KCPs has earned the trust of many families and the convenience of vaccination for everyone in one location. It could be compelling, but I wanted to highlight the fact that we have earned trust of our families due to the consistent and transparent communication and protocols that we've had in KCPs. And then, another one, Krista Gordon down here, "Way to Lead KCPs." This slide talks about back-to-school nights, orientations, open houses, and activities. This is pretty small print, but you'll see every school on here listed out by their open house dates, maybe orientation dates or other activities, maybe rallies or fairs that they might be having. So, this is available to the board to see which schools are doing what activities as we open school. And as an important note for our families and parents, you can find all this information on our website as well as the presentation, but we look forward to seeing the majority of our families at these back-to-school nights, orientation, or open houses as we begin the school year on August 23rd. And this is a quick slide about Summer Fest and Parent University. We do have Summer Fest this Saturday. This is a drive-through edition as was like last year due to the pandemic. And one thing to note is that we have over 2,300 families currently registered. We have slots for about 2,500 registrants. We will take anyone else who comes, though we encourage everyone to come and join us. But we have filled up our slots very quickly and we have assigned times for our families to come during an hour time slot. Also note, at Summer Fest, we have filled all of our time slots for sports, physicals, vaccinations, immunizations, and hearing and seeing tests. This is really great that we have our families participating in those events and those opportunities. Again, we will take walk-ins even though we're full and we'll accommodate anyone who comes to Summer Fest on Saturday. And then, Parent University, we do have our Introduction to Infinite Campus sessions, three of them for Parent University. You'll note the dates and times here. Two are virtual events and one is in-person at the Board of Education, for which we ask parents to register. So, we have indication of how many people will be present in the boardroom to accommodate that number. And you'll also find more information about Infinite Campus, how to access training videos, how to access your account on the website listed at the last bullet point. And I think that's all of my slides. Ms. Quinley, you are next.
Good evening. For Mr. Walls this evening, I just want to share a little bit of information on our plans for transportation, how we're getting started, not dissimilar to last year when we returned in the spring at all, but a couple of little differences. Let's start with some key, important information. The route information mailers will go out to families Friday. They'll get in the mail then, so they should have them by Monday or Tuesday of next week. Lots of information is going to be on those cards. In addition to that, a new feature of Infinite Campus is that families will be able to find their route information in Infinite Campus. So, our hope is that that rolls up and works and is there Monday as well. And then, they'll be on the website, of course, as they always are. We do anticipate, and we want to be really transparent about this, some adjustments because of new addresses, school changes, due to COVID and disconnection with some families, our student information system conversion, mobility concerns. We expect that we're going to have some adjustments happening daily and we are prepared for that. Chris Walls and his team are prepared with a great plan of how we respond to those as quickly as we can. Students and drivers will be required to wear masks on bus at all times. As we did last year, we'll load from front to back and there will be assigned seating so that we can do contract tracing, contact tracing. I wrote contract, but I should say contact tracing. That's why I said it wrong, as needed. I think an important piece of information that we didn't put on the slide there is we, as Dr. Bedell said, we cannot guarantee three-foot distancing at all times, but we're following CDC guidelines, doing what we can to make sure we get everyone to school. Buses will again be sanitized between every run, which means sometimes three times in the morning and three times in the afternoon. And then, we will be using our short buses, cab contracts, and STA to do sweeps for that first month. So, that if a child misses a bus because of an error on our part for where we had them addressed or for whatever reason that first month, we are running and picking up kids and getting them to school.
Ms. Quinley, if you can just share with the board and the community, I know we'll have hotline folks available. And when would that be available?
So, our hotline staff will be here on Monday because as those cards go out, we expect the calls. All the information for how to reach the hotline will be on the cards that families receive as well as on the front page of our KCPS website. You can't miss it. It's very in-your-face when you get up there. And so, that staff will be here Monday to start taking calls and making adjustments. And I think I have Mr. Gordon up next.
Good evening, Dr. Bedell, Board Chair, WLSI, and members of the board. I'm elated to share with your upcoming food service plan. What you see in front of you for food service in the upcoming school year is really the culmination of a lot of concerted conversations in partnership with CDC, our local health department, our school principals, and then also our food service staff. So, learning from our recent practice around how we service students in the most safe and efficient manner, we've come up with and landed on these four service models. So, breakfast in the classroom in all of our campuses will either be served in the classroom, awaiting the students as they arrive to the campus. Secondarily, it'll be grab-and-go as they come in. They can select their breakfast items and go straight to their classroom. And lunch, on the lunch service side, we're going to do lunch in the cafe where social distancing can be adhered to within that three-feet model. Apart from that, we are going to largely in our elementary, continue on with our model with lunch in the classroom where our food service staff brings the meals directly to the classroom. Note to mention our largest barrier. Earlier this afternoon, I met with the leaders and we discussed all the fabulous things we have going in food service. Shortly thereafter, I received a phone call from our newly awarded Prime Food vendor who said they would not be able to service us in the upcoming school years. So, they cited supply chain management issues as well as staffing. Since then, I've spent the last four hours speaking to just about anyone who would answer the phone in the distribution world. We have two partners, one in the Springfield area. Actually, it's the largest food distributor in Springfield. I had a very fruitful and optimistic conversation with their CEO down there. We're going to follow up tomorrow and kind of see if we can nail down some logistics and coordination points as well as we had a very optimistic conversation with the team out of Iowa. So, between those two, both really recognize the dire straits that this places on a school system of our size and are willing to come together in some capacity to support us for the upcoming school year. So, that is our update for food service. Any questions for me?
Hey, it is important, I'm sorry, just to note that we're not the only school district this happened to. I did receive a phone call from another superintendent today saying that they pulled the rug from under them, and that district's a lot larger than ours.
And if it's okay, hold questions till we get to the end, if that's okay with you, just so we can, because we're trying to make a little time.
I got confused about order, sorry.
Good evening. All right, so Custodial Services Department, our work is really guided by the CDC. Just to start, we really focus on high-touch services and cleaning those areas more frequently in our buildings. We have provided training to our staff. We do that on a monthly basis, and it is recorded with our area managers to keep on file. We did implement, and we started this last school year, two cleaning logs. This helps us to monitor and keep the integrity of our work and the service that we provide to our students and staff. And we also have a two-step cleaning process that we do. We clean and sanitize our surfaces, followed by our disinfecting. With some of the COVID funds that we received, we were able to purchase the Clorox Total 360 machines, which is an electrostatic sprayer that we use in all of our buildings. So, each of our sites, they have one at each of their buildings. And as our staff performs their work, we do provide the necessary PPE for them. They wear their gloves all the time while they're performing their duties. When we get notified of any staff members or students that is suspected or confirmed of being COVID-19, we have a procedure that's listed in the slide so that you can review. And hand sanitizers has been installed in all of our classrooms, entranceways, and exits as well. We have distributed all of our PPE, our standard PPE for the district, to all of our sites so they will be ready for the start of school. And that PP includes face masks for both adults and children, face shields, gloves, and gowns as well.
Now I'm up again. So, on behalf of Mr. Berkey from Facilities, we wanted to share just a quick update of what are we doing largely related to indoor air quality, as that remains something we want to pay close attention to. We're actively monitoring and managing fresh air intake into our building as one of the recommended procedures and things to do to assure good fresh air. We have purchased and are placing additional portable air cleaning units like this large one you see in here in the back of the room. You hear that light hum. That's what that is, an air cleaning machine here. MERV-13 filters around the district wherever our systems can tolerate it. We do have some really old systems who can't tolerate that tight-knit of a MERV-13 filter, and we actually ended up with some failures related to that. So, we're just having to utilize the best filters we can with as frequent rotation we can in those locations. You did recently approve new dedicated outside air systems for us for three of our elementary schools, so those projects are getting started. And additionally, at the Woodland Learning Center as part of Phase 2 for the newcomer and the early learning center. So, those are specific projects that came about because of our study of our buildings and where we had the greatest need. And then additionally, as Dr. Bedell has shared with you, due to our need to assure as much as we can, social distancing at LCPA, we're bringing in two double modular classrooms that will be parked on the parking lot.
Acting Chair, Board, Dr. Bedell, Board, wanted to share some information with you all about our enrollment fair as well as an update on our enrollment numbers. Before I turn it over to Major Brooks, I just want to publicly recognize, Major Brooks, his entire team, the amount of effort and work that went into this fair behind the scenes, it was a lot. Major really, really stepped up with an innovative idea. Just can't say enough about him and the team and the ability to pull this off. And with that, also like to recognize all of our BOE staff, all of our schools that committed folks for that entire week. I think it was a really important event for our community, and it couldn't have happened, obviously, without Major's leadership, his team, as well as the support from everybody else in the district. So, we really appreciate that. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Major Brooks.
One of the things I want to do, I want to share the vision that we came up with that was paramount in my mind and important for us to understand. We wanted an annual event at the last week of July that we could establish that effectively, you know, provides enrollment, admission processes, and give family great customer service and gain parents' buy-in. That's paramount for us. The second part was the mission. The mission is always dear to me. What I wanted to do for parents was not only great customer service and buy-in, but highlight some of the district unique multiple support services and opportunity. The multiple educational resources and options that are available, the differential between KCPS and charter schools, and to share the district's story, how we're looking forward to Project 2030 and how we're re-establishing our perspective in order to serve students and parents. I also wanted to provide a personalized interaction by Pacific School staff by having them being enrolled by their Pacific Secretaries, as well as have representatives from the school to give that parent an opportunity to ask questions about the school that their student would be attending. I also wanted to take a close look at the opportunity to make our process more user-friendly so that there would not be the frustration that we've experienced in the past. The next thing I wanted to do was I want to use some touchpoints. One of the things that I think that we have to come to the forefront on is using technology. One of the things you find paper is nonexistent. In most places you go now, they require even the menu that you take a QR code. So, most of the things that we gave at the enrollment fair, we had a QR code. And I would ask parents, "Take the school schedule because this will go away. Put it on your phone. Understand you can always bring it up and you can always understand where you should be and how you can help your students throughout the year." As well as what we wanted to do was, we wanted to take a close look at the QLR code. How is that working? Is it really serving our customers and how they feel about it? And the last thing, we wanted to understand what was the customer satisfaction factor? And so, we had surveys. Last thing we wanted to do, we wanted to expose them to the communication information system that we have in place, the parent portal, making them understand that they can immediately get information from the district about their student, about things that are going on as well as the pandemic. Next slide. Okay, what I want to do right now is provide you the input. During the time of the fair, we had 455 enrollments, if you will. Now, here's what's deceiving. Because each parent has an OLR, it only gave that one. But each parent routinely had one or two or three students, so this does not represent the end result. We are looking at trying to get exactly how much it increased our enrollment. We continued that. If you had an opportunity to go down to our Westport Room, we continued to fare on a much smaller scale, but we're providing the same services. And what the parents have really said is they appreciate the opportunity. As you might remember, last year, we had them lined around the building. Now, they're being put into the Westport Room in comfortable positions, given the opportunity to have snacks, and a waiting room for their children so they can focus on being helped. And that has worked out tremendously. At this point, when this was made, we were at a total of 894. As of today, we're at 1,000. So, we are moving quite a bit toward getting our students back and a lot of new enrollees. One of the things I really want to bring to your attention was, I was very concerned about our customer service. I told Dr. Bedell at one point that we were not serving our customers well. We were not doing good customer service. And I believe that's the key. The key is information and treating them as though we care. And we do. And I told lots of parents, "We cannot wait for their students to come back to us. They need us, we need them." And we shared that at that fair, and they felt that. Look at the results of here. If you add up the very satisfied and satisfied, the very first one, customer service, a 90% approval rate. In some cases, you say that's impossible, but that's what the parents told us. You look at online processing, 84.89, very satisfied is satisfied. We have some work there, and we want to look at those other dissatisfied and very dissatisfied to better help that next year we have above 90 on that. You look at knowledge and communication, a 92.44. That says that we, in fact, were communicating and providing knowledge that they needed. And that's key. And I talked to parents, and they said, "This is the first time I really got a thorough understanding of what you all are about and what you can do for me." And this next part revolving questions, a 90%. When they asked us a question, we were able to provide that information or have someone there that could provide it to them. And that's critical. It was a one-stop shop, and they loved that. The last thing was the overall impression. "How are you feeling that we did?" A 91%. This says that we are doing what I hoped we would. We are building relationship with parents and making them feel as though they're a part of their child's education. And we are feeling that they understand and we want them to understand that we have so much to offer and that we're so dedicated that the choices for them is only one, KCPS. And the last thing I want to share with you, this one of the many ones we got. If you listen to what this parent said, the enrollment fair is actually really amazing. It should be encouraged that all parents, even if they are already enrolled, be made aware and come to the event. I wish I had communication from the district on this and was made aware of all the resources and information that would be at the fair. It should probably just be called a District Informational Fair. All of my questions here were answered promptly, and it felt like staff really, staff went above and beyond to help me. Really appreciate KCPS doing this type of event, and that's what I hope for. And I want to also extend my thanks for all the board members that came down and had an opportunity to see the event. I am very grateful and to Dr. Bedell for allowing me the opportunity to have this and Mr. Rand, as well as Communication and all those departments in school. Thank you, and we look forward to next year.
Before we get into these numbers, I do want to mention again just a really big thanks to our Communications Department. They did a great job getting out many, many different communications over multiple weeks. What we also saw is that word of mouth was really a big deal in terms of families also learning about it. I think as you saw from the numbers, they went up each day to where Friday was our largest, and I'm sure if we were there all day on Saturday, we would have had even more. So, again, really, really appreciative to the Communications Office for their assistance with that. So, we have some updated enrollment numbers for you all. As I shared at our last meeting, we dug into the last four years of data in terms of what percentage of our families return each year, as well as looking last year at the number of enrollments that we had at different points during the summer and leading up to our official September Count Day, which is obviously extremely important to us because that's what the state uses as our official number of students, which obviously affects how we get paid. So, what we have here are updated numbers. Just to give an overview of what you're looking at, obviously, the first column is grade level. The next column, that's SY21 count, that is the school year 2020-2021 official September count, which was 13,343. The next column, called Returning, this is the number of students that we are anticipating that either were with us at some point last year or were with us at the end of the school year. Based on historical percentages, which have been pretty consistent, we applied that and saw that we are anticipating 11,814 students returning that were with us at some point last year. At this point in time, as far as new enrollments from outside of the district, we were at 642 when we put this data together. We have more than that. We have a bunch of registrations that we're processing now, and so we anticipate that number will continue to increase. And so, that Returning plus new number is we took the number of kids that we're anticipating coming back, the number of new enrollments from outside the system, so that if we enrolled no other kids at all, we would have 12,456 students, or that's what we would anticipate it to be. Last year, the time between basically today and the September Count Day, that's that enroll 8/10/20 through 9/30/20, so we're looking at last school year, the number of completed registrations, basically during the same timeframe we have between today and Count Day, and that was 773. And so, if we just assume we hit that same number, that would put us at 13,229. That would be 114 students under what we had last year on Count Day, which lets us know that we have a lot of work to do in terms of really making sure that we secure as many enrollments as possible. I will highlight that the last presentation, we were 167 behind, and so we've made up 53, which we obviously would like to make more, but at least we're making some positive progress. And to that end, as the board indicated they would like to see, you know, we have given an updated count of our leads. And so, we have our cold leads. Those are people that are tired of us. Those are people that are tired of us calling them. We have our medium leads that may be a month or two since we've heard from them. And then we have our hot leads, which are families that have filled out an initial application or expressed interest, basically in the last three weeks to a month, that, that, that we feel we could really tap into. So we have a total of one thousand three hundred and thirty-six leads. Obviously, looking at these numbers, it's not hard to see that kindergarten and first grade really stick out. And that, that is an area where we're going to place a lot of emphasis in, in, in trying to pull in those enrollments. So that's an update of where we are. Appreciate the time this evening, and I will turn it over to you all for questions.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate you letting us go all the way through that till we get to questions. I will open it up to my colleagues. If, if I might ask, if we could start with Ms. Ford first, since we went with her last? Not to like throw you, I know, and if you want to pass, you're allowed to, but I would ask that we keep our, our questions kind of not short, but you know, be, be precise, I guess. Ms. Ford, are you good to go if you, you want to ask a question?
Can we come back, come back to me? That was a whole lot. I'm trying to make sure I had all my questions.
Absolutely. I totally understand. So I'm going to look around because are you wanting, you're passing? Manny, I knew, or Mr. Avarka, I knew you'd want to go. So yes, go right ahead.
I'm trying my best with this microphone here. This is fun read on Ms. Cortez. So yeah, I, I want to go back and, and acknowledge kind of the beginning of this and, and say to Dr. Bedell, to the team, to the union members, staff, families, parents. It is an incredible opportunity to be a part of this group, really and truly leading in this space around the response to COVID nineteen from the beginning of the pandemic. And I think that's very evidently true as we look at the confidence that folks have in what we're doing and the preventative measures. So let me start there. And, and the space of the, the new mandate and option of testing as the alternative for staff, I think we're the only district in the region probably at this point and probably the state, I'd say, who's gone to this level. So I think that also is, is very paramount to lead in that space. As we look at Kansas City specifically, I think what's driving my questions here is the fact that right now in KC Mo Latinos are three times as likely to die from COVID. African Americans are two times as likely to die from COVID. As we look at those who are in hospitals right now and as beds wrap up, ninety-seven percent of those people unfortunately are not vaccinated. And my questions drive based upon that. The reality that the health department has said forty-two children in the first five days of August had been impacted and received COVID is a real reality. And so my questioning will be around the idea of expanding the mandate request to all of those eligible twelve and up. And as the vaccine progresses and the CDC releases the next wave of opportunities, that we do our best to, to research and try and understand what capabilities lie within the power of our board and what we can do to advocate to the state, it sounds like maybe is the option there to require those potential mandates. So my two questions are here. How are the current shots or the vaccine passports approved that we currently have, right? So the schedule that we currently have for hepatitis, diphtheria, tetanus, measles, mumps, all of this stuff that we require currently for our students? What is that process for approval?
I'll let our expert come up. I think we've talked about this previously, that you have some items of federal, federal, which is pretty much national across the country. Measal shots, TB shots, all of those things are universal. And then there may be state-related requirements, but I'll, I'll let our experts speak to that because I know at least for me, working in several states, those required shots and vaccinations that students need to have, they have been uniform across the three or four states that I've worked in, so.
Yes. The state of Missouri has required immunizations to attend school. The school nurses are the ones that kind of oversee that. So when a student enrolls, they show up typically on our non-compliant list, what we call. And then the nurse then goes in, looks at the, maybe like the scanned in records, or we can check, show me vax online. It's a Missouri database, which they are working on, talking state to state. So if we have kids that had originally maybe gotten vaccinated in Kansas, we might not have access to that. But then we check all those and then we try and work with the families to get them vaccinated.
Just one clarification on that component. Thank you for that in terms of how we use it in our schools. I think maybe, I don't want to throw Bill here into the mix here, but trying to understanding how the law would allow us to or not allow us to and, and how those mandates got put into place, not historical background necessarily, is that it sounds like the state may be the requiring factor here.
Yeah, so if you don't mind, could you ask the question again?
Sure. In terms of how these current schedules for vaccine mandated requirements, who is the authority that mandated these? Because these were not Board of Education driven, right? These are state, federal mandates, and that is the power that, that, that they have the power to, to mandate these, not the Boards of Education. Is that correct?
Correct. And, and I think if you look at the statute, there's a statute that talks about the vaccinations required. I think the Department of Health works with the DESI and the State Board to promulgate rules and things for those things that are promulgated by legislation. So I think what it takes is legislation, a recommendation by the Department of Health, and then legislation from the General Assembly.
Oh, I guess one other question here. In terms of this process, right? Because we've, and maybe this, Bill, thank you for that. I don't want to put you on the hotspot here.
I appreciate it.
It sounds like we have some systems in place right now to provide the opportunity for employees to get vaccinations onsite, maybe, or this may be the question as well on this side, the, the opportunity to have paid time off to go get the vaccination or access issues for the mandate as we have in place now. And it sounds like we also have the option for, for families and students in place and testing also is the other layer, right? So we're multi-layered in our preventative measures here to give us the best opportunity to prevent further spread in our classrooms. Is there anything else that we can do as a board within our power and ability outside of advocacy, it sounds like, to help prevent any spread of COVID?
I think advocacy, can I say that again? Is probably the best thing, you know, in helping educate on the, the power of the vaccine and how much that helps correctly and consistently wearing your mask when you're not socially distanced and inside. Those I think are just kind of the big, the two biggest things that we can do right now.
To final wrap up, I just want to ask my colleagues to encourage the administration to continue the advocacy in being leaders in this space around wearing masks, around getting vaccinations, as we know that we're serving a population of people who are disproportionately affected by COVID and the Delta variant. And our work here is incredibly important as pandemic politics, I guess, approach these board seats. It's important that we also do everything we can to put ourselves in the advocacy position to be healthy.
And if I can, just, I want to speak to this because as I stated earlier at the start of this presentation, you know, I, I receive a lot of emails and text messages from different superintendents around the country and what they are experiencing in board meetings, what they're experiencing in their respective school districts. And I, I think it's important for me to just make sure that I'm, I'm very clear. You know, we have written procedures around when it is appropriate for a teacher to wear a mask and when it isn't appropriate for a teacher to wear a mask, when it is appropriate for central office people to wear a mask and when it isn't. And all of that stuff is available on our website. We've made it very clear that in, 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 in the midst of being around children, we all have a responsibility that we need to wear our masks at all times. And while it may be difficult for us to believe that we can operate and speak, we, we know that we can do it because our school district, we were in masks when we came back March fifteenth. We never, we never removed that. And we had a lot of success as a school district. We will continue to work with our adults as we continue to get CDC updates, that there are times when it may be appropriate where they don't have to have a mask. At this point, we're going to continue that. And I know that there are folks out there that will take any opportunity that they can get to scrutinize. We're not in front of kids right now. And we also are spread out. So if I was to take my mask off just as people were presented, that is causing no harm to anybody in this room at this time. That changes when we are around children that don't have an opportunity because they're not old enough to receive a vaccination.
I'm look, I'm looking to my board colleagues to see if they want to make, I mean, to make any more questions, comments. I'm also looking at you, Ms. Ford. Didn't know if you had a chance to think through any questions that you may have or comments. So I'll pitch it back to you and you can either catch it or send it back.
Yeah. Dr. Bedell, is there a way for you to kind of share, just kind of if there's any early feedback or just kind of general feelings that we are hearing from folks about just kind of returning back to school? Either about the mandate or just like general feelings about returning back to school kind of at this time? What are some of the things that you are hearing that would be good to share openly?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. And honestly, Ms. Ford, we, we check, ask the superintendent, we check, let's talk, we check our website, Facebook, Twitter. To be very honest with you, we have not gotten pushback. We just, we have not gotten negative feedback. I think many people, when they, when we brought our kids back in March, saw how well the, the systems were set up, even when we had to close a class or two or even had to close the school while we were quarantining, because we were very transparent around that system, the notifications that families received. I think a lot of that has eased anxiety. Going through summer school, also with the twenty-two, twenty-three hundred kids that we served in summer school, we have one case. We have one positive and then there were two students that had to be quarantined. I think we had about five adults throughout the summer, maybe six, where we've experienced that during summer school. But what we do know is by people wearing their masks, you know, we have been able to be successful for the most part. We do have individuals in central office that have either been in close contact, and I don't know if, what the exact number is around the number of individuals that may have been confirmed positive with, with it, but our contact methods that we have to trace, we've been able to operate pretty well. But honestly, I just simply haven't received a lot of negative feedback or negative attention or worries at this point from the community or even our students. And I'm certain as board members, we do have, you guys are very involved with your respective constituents. If they had concerns, many of them would have brought them to you and you all would have definitely allowed for me to know that. So I'm, I'm feeling pretty good right now, as long as we can continue to demonstrate and deliver on what we've shared with you all tonight.
Okay. And then do we feel the same about kind of generally about teachers as well, especially as it relates to the mandate?
Well, I'll, I'll tell you, I think we are sitting with seventeen vacancies right now, which for our school district, that's a lot because in the last two years, we've been able to be, we're under ten. I have spoken, you know, I hate to say this and I'm not going to throw other districts under the bus, but I, I heard a superintendent last week on a call say that he's sitting with fifty-two vacancies right now. So we know that we have received, as we're filling these positions, we may have received some resignations as a result of the letter that we put out on Friday. Because it's my understanding that we had a couple more people to, well, I'm going to have Dr. Collier come up to give you a better answer on that. And I don't know if it's contributed to what we put out around either get vaccinated or we need, you need to be tested. But I can tell you, because we've had a lot of support from our union, a lot of how we handled everything last year gave us a lot of support from our reunion because of how we handled the pandemic last year, taking our adults' health and wellbeing into account first, along with our students. And I think that has given us a lot of support that this is the right thing to do, given how we handled it last year. Go ahead, Dr. Collier.
We have experienced some resignations recently, but none of them have stated that it's because of the mask mandate or even fears about returning to the classroom. In fact, what we've received is that they are leaving, going to other districts, particularly districts in Kansas that are offering bonuses, that are also paying the liquidated damage fee. They're telling us where they're going. So, so they're not afraid to teach because they're going to be teaching somewhere, but they're leaving us right now to go to other places that are offering more money at this point. Right now, most districts are struggling to fill their vacancies and districts are desperate and they're finding ways to fight for the few teachers that are out there.
Ms. Ford, are you, were those all your questions?
I have one more question and it's related to the enrollment data that was shared. I know that we are aware of some of the challenges with the, the new system that we are transitioning to. I am just wanting to, I guess, make sure that we are doing all that we can to make sure that we are, I guess, really looking at, I'm thinking about the students that are new to the school district and if they are not, maybe weren't included in that integration. If we're doing all that we can to make sure that those students, we are looking into their enrollment and that they have everything clarified.
Yeah, I think that's a great question and I want Dr. David Rand to come up and share with you what we're doing. We are, listen, I, I, I'm about transparency. We, I will be very clear with everybody. We're going through this conversion and there are glitches and it's, and, and it's really going to take us getting through that whole first semester, I mean, first grading cycle before a lot of these things get ironed out. Each day, we are seeing more components of it working better and I'll let David Rand share with you from that aspect because I have gotten some feedback from not only several board members, but I've gotten feedback from some of our parents that have had some concerns that they're not hearing and getting information from the district.
Yeah, we have definitely heard that feedback. Those concerns are definitely valid. And so we're looking at a couple different groups of students. So first, we have the students that are new to our district, that would not have been in our system last year and even had an opportunity to roll up to this year. And yes, it, it, we did not do as good of a job as we needed to in getting those completed registrations converted into actual enrollments in our system. And so there was a delay that honestly, we should have done a lot better with. And we should have been communicating with those families a lot earlier in, in the summer, and I will definitely own that. At this point, all of those families have had their registrations converted to enrollments. Communications has sent a couple different email messages to those families. At the time that we pulled it a few days ago, I think it was one thousand two hundred and sixty-seven. And communications has sent an email to all of those families. We have provided Excel spreadsheets to every single one of our schools with those families on it as well, with their contact information, so that they are also able to reach out. And so those families should now be receiving communication of some sort, either from us or from their school. The next piece is trying to get all of the students that finished last year with us into the system for this year. And so just recently, about a week ago, we ran an audit in collaboration with I T to look at, okay, who finished the year with us last year? What's Infinite Campus looking like now and who's missing? And honestly, there were probably another twelve hundred students that had not made it from Tyler into Infinite Campus. At this point, most of those students have gotten in. There may be another hundred or so that we're still working on, but we're also collaborating with the schools and the school secretaries in sending lists to them so that they can kind of do an audit on their end as well.
kind of do an audit on their end as well. And so honestly, it's just a continuous thing that we're always, that we're doing basically daily in trying to ensure that all of our students are in the system, not only for the communication, but if they're not in the system, they can't get scheduled. And so that's really important to us, that we want all of our families to have a schedule day one. And so we're working diligently. Really would like to thank Mr. Anson, IT, Jody Powell, their entire team. They've been putting in many, many hours to try to get, to try to get all of this stuff correct. But to the original question, yes, we should have done a much, much better job in ensuring that our schools knew who their new families were and getting them enrolled in our system so that they could receive communication.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
Does that conclude your questions?
No more questions, but just shout out to Major Brooks for the fair, and then shout out to whoever is responsible for that pop-up when you go to the website, and it lists those quick phone numbers that you need. I thought that was good.
I am going to ask just to, I want to make a comment. I feel that actually this opening of schools, given what we went through last year and what we know, I think, we're going to have to go through again in a different form this year, we're in a much better position from addressing what we need to, to, as a parent, for someone like me as a parent to feel comfortable sending my child to school. So for that, I am grateful. I know these will not be the end of our challenges, unfortunately. So I know that the board has also asked for things, like we did talk about gating criteria last year, will that be looked at again this year? So there's, there is still more to continue to try to mete out, but I feel like we're in a good place. I want to end on an up note, because what I'm most excited about is school starting again. I mean, last year, you know, being in person, you know, I'm looking, parent, parent, and I'm looking at you now, Ms. Ford, new parent in the district. It's such a fun time of the year, it truly is, and from parents' perspective, it's really fun. But just, I know that the students are super excited to come back to, as well as the teachers. And so I am thankful that you've also put in the hard work, starting with the enrollment fair, Major Brooks. You know I was there, you know I saw it, I thought it was the bomb. I walked through a couple of parents with Dr. Jones, and I know Ms. Ford was there as well, and the reactions I was getting from parents who were going through it, these were new-enrollee people, so it was just fantastic. And then I also had a parent in my office comment to me that it was just fantastic for them because it was a one-stop shop, and they didn't realize that there were all these other things that our district offered, because they don't typically need them. But that doesn't mean that they don't know other families in their schools and in their lives that may not, that might need those services. So I felt like it was well done, and I know, just like any good event, it will create its own, it'll get better and bigger each year. So thank you. And that, you know, reminding everybody about Summer Fest, and just parents, if you're listening, stay on top of making sure that you're getting those communications, because as Ms. Rachel mentioned, I was one of those parents that unsubscribed because I had an older child that I thought I didn't need that anymore from that, and I unsubscribed from everything. So just reminding parents that you do have a responsibility to ensure that you are getting communications from the district, and addcommunications@kcpublixschools.org to your contacts so they also don't end up in your spam. So I think with that said, we've come to the end of, yep, nope, I'm not done, I'm good. I'm not that bad at this yet, am I? We'll move to the last part, which Dr. Bedell will introduce some business items for the August 25, 2021 board meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I thought you were getting ready to say, "We've come to the end." And we just have one more slide, and I don't know if our IT division, can we get the slide up on the screen? Outstanding. And then just slide up one more. All right. So these are the items that we asked the board to take action for on August 25. Greater KC Link and KCPSCaring Communities, $1,030,530. Children's Center for the Visually Impaired, $854,000. Cornerstones of Care for $700,000. Nows Home for Children, $340,000. Rainbow Center, $430,000. EBS, which is our special education subservices, $2,190,000. Wayside, which is our digital curriculum, $374,654.45. Refinancing of the 2015 equipment lease debt, $900,000 in estimated savings. Vasquez Contracting, which is part of our Woodland Phase II project, $1,536,596. EMCOR Services Fagan, which is part of a Woodland Phase I change order, number two for $51,267. Madam Chair, that concludes my portion.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. That brings us to the conclusion of our agenda for this evening. So if there's no objection, and I'm looking, I can't see Ms. Ford, but I'm assuming she has no objection, the meeting is adjourned.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.
I don't know where we're looking, but yes.